Possible action and excusing of any absent member of the governing body board. Mayor Ambrosio Hernandez, Commissioner Lesar Juarez Arlo,
President.
Commissioner Bobby Carrillo, Commissioner Ramiro Caballero, Mayor Pretend Daniel Chavez,
Here.
Commissioner Ricardo Medina,
Present.
And Commissioner Itza Flores.
Present.
We do have a quorum and we need to excuse absence members.
To excuse absent members? Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passed.
Item B, Pledge of Alleges and Invocation by Mr. Pete Arredondo with our Fire Department.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Just power heads and pray. Lord, we gather here today to ask you for your blessing, that you may continue to guide our city leaders in making the best decisions for the citizens of FAR. Give them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to find ways in which to better serve the people of FAR every single day. Lord, in this special day, we also gather to commemorate the 100th anniversary of the FAR Fire Department. We ask that you protect the former, present, and future members of one of the best fire departments here in the valley. Thank you, Lord, for blessing the city of FAR, its employees, its citizens, in God we trust. Amen.
Amen.
Under proclamations, we have proclamation proclaiming the week of July 18 through the 22nd, 2022, as 100th anniversary of FAR Fire Department.
Chief Pilar Rodriguez will come up and present with the members of the FAR Department. Go ahead and come on up, everyone. Chief, go ahead and send everybody up.
Yeah, sure.
Did you bring the whole department?
I brought the whole department. Thank you. Thank you all for being here. I've been assigned to read the proclamation. And proclamation states, whereas in July 1916, FAR laid waste to a square block in FAR that included the FAR lumber company, FAR mercantile company, Folsom Hardware Company, National Theater, and several other representatives, businesses that supplied most of the needs of the city. And whereas in July 1922, the FAR volunteer fire department formally organized and chartered with the Secretary of State of Texas and has since been responsible for protecting the lives and property of the city of FAR and surrounding areas. And whereas the charter members of the FAR volunteer fire department were J.E. Rogers, Chief D. McLendon, First Assistant Chief, A.A. Kelly, Second Assistant Chief, W.E. Allen, Third Assistant Chief, and L.J. Pope Jr., Roland Kroger, M.B. Gore, Ralph Salisbury, R.M. Henderson, John White, Casey White, T.H. Pollan, J.J. Mower, Benny Egley, Ernest Calhoun, Joe Lammers, Newell Thomas, G.E. Bryton, Shirley Niyom, P.S. Divine, and Ben Kelly. And whereas the FAR Fire Department is one of the oldest serving fire departments in Hidal County, Texas, that started as all volunteers and today operates as a combination department with 83 career full staff, full-time staff, and 20 volunteer members. And whereas the FAR Fire Department helps to ensure the safety of our citizens and the men and women of the department continue to serve professionally with dedication to the life, safety, and property conservation. Now therefore, I, Commissioner Ricardo Medina, on behalf of Mayor Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the city of FAR, Texas, in virtual, in virtual of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the mayor and the city commission, join in recognizing the centennial anniversary of the FAR Fire Department and do hereby proclaim the week of July 18 through the 22nd, 2022, as the 100th anniversary of the FAR Fire Department. And here, in witness whereof, I have here on set the hand of the mayor of the city of FAR, caused by the seal of the city of FAR, to be affixed on the fifth day of July 2022. Congratulations, gentlemen and ladies.
Mayor Pretend and Commissioners, on behalf of the FAR Fire Department, I want to thank you and the members also want to thank you for this proclamation, recognizing the service for the past 100 years to the citizens of FAR with dedication to protecting life and preserving property. But as part of that 100-year centennial, the week of July, particularly July 21st, 2022, we'll be having an event for the public to celebrate the centennial with them. It'll be here across the street at the amphitheater. And we invite the mayor and the commission and of course, the general public to participate in our 100-year celebration. And again, thank you for recognizing the hard work and dedication of not only this generation of the firefighters, but the previous generations that have served the citizens of FAR. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great. Thank you, team. I know when we're small, we see many, many kids and boys and females wanting to be firefighters. And I'm glad to see there's some female firefighters here. Thank you for that. And also, we end up seeing there's not an easy task to do. It's not an easy job. So I congratulate all of you all for your greatest effort and everything you give back to the public. I know you're just not waiting for a fire to happen, but you're always finding ways to give back and teach the community life safety skills. So thank you. How many of you are going to fit in the front? But yeah. Just a few. Hold on. Get up there. Face the audience. Squeeze the button. I was going to move the podium, but I don't know.
Henry is at home. He would actually love it. He does. He likes people. He barks at people and tells them he likes them.
Perfect. Who's walking up? Okay, next item on the agenda is public testimony. And we do have a person that signed up to speak, Ms. Edith Castillo. Yes. And she's going to address item 6B.
Which one?
I apologize. First of all, thank you for letting me speak. I apologize. I wasn't prepared to come today. I was just by a lucky chance that you guys had your meeting today. So I want to address the FAR auditorium. I live in the city of McAllen, but I only live two miles away from the FAR auditorium. I use, I've used the FAR Aquatic Center on a regular basis to exercise because I need to, when I exercise, I prefer to swim. It's easier on my joints. I'm an older person. So when I heard about the auditorium opening up on La Vista, I was excited because it's closer to my house. It's within two miles. The city of McAllen does not have an indoor facility like that that we can use over there. So going to the city of FAR was something that I was excited about. When I heard that you guys were charging an extra $10 for, and I apologize, I'm not prepared because again, I didn't know what I was talking today. When I found out they were charging an extra $10 for city, people that are not residents of FAR, I was very upset about it because my understanding is that when the city of FAR got the grant, a $3.5 million grant to build the facilities, it was to encourage people to work out, to provide a better lifestyle, to...
Ma'am, your time is up. You have one minute and a half.
Okay. Can I ask for this thing to be tabled on the agenda since I didn't have a time to speak? And this is the third time this is brought up.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, but your time has lapsed. And it's only the Board of Commissioners who can act on the items. So we appreciate your comments and you're welcome to submit any other information after the meeting.
There's another thing that needs to be discussed.
There's a two-minute time limit. I'm sorry.
Next item, four, public hearings on development services cases. And no one signed up to speak on that item. Item five, city manager report. And we have the city engineer's report. Maria is here in the audience to answer any questions.
Maria is here if you have any questions for that. If not, we can move on to the exciting part of the city manager's report. We have some All-Stars here this morning. I have Sergio from Parks and Rec to come and introduce our All-Stars from the Pony League here in FAR.
Mayor Pretend, Commissioners, good afternoon. Set it on ease for the record. Parks and Rec Director, Isaac Osco, by the way, Assistant Director. In the spring, we concluded our Pony Baseball and Softball season. We had approximately 40 teams, 500 kids registered. And this time of year in the summertime is when we get to the, you know, the select few that get the privilege to play in the All-Stars. And here behind us in the, oh, sorry. Here behind us, we have a couple of teams that, All-Stars have been going on for about a month already. And these are the ones that kind of advanced towards the end. And we just wanted to recognize them. One of the teams is the baseball, the 6U Boys. They placed first here in the region. And the other one would be the 8U Girls, and they placed third. So we just want to kind of take the time to thank the parents, the coaches. We, the two head coaches actually are city employees. One of them is Robert Hernandez for the, for the boys and Cesar Matonao for the, for the girls. And they're in here. So we really appreciate all the volunteer coaching that we do have. Without them, without the parents, you know, our leagues don't, don't take place. So we really want to give them thanks for, for everything, the patience. I know we're not the, we try our best. And we just want to thank everybody for, for hanging in there with us for the season. It was a very successful season. And, and now this is, I guess, the accomplishment. So they traveled, we had teams from Brownsville all the way to Rue Grande City. And they were playing daytime weekdays. So it was just a mixture of everything. And it takes effort from the parents and the coaches and all the volunteers. So we just want to, like I said again, thank you to everybody who's in the room here and take a couple of pictures with these teams. I don't know if the coaches want to have, have any words to say, but...
Yeah, bring them up.
Yeah, bring up the coaches up so we know who they are.
Yeah. Robert and Caesar. Yeah, they're both city employees. So, and I know there's a couple of other coaches that we've had for years and years and they keep coming back. So it's not something, we really appreciate all the volunteers. It's Robert and Caesar. So I don't know if you guys have any comments or questions.
I'd like to say something.
Yeah, go ahead. And who would like to say your experience and how you are becoming so successful again, first place?
I've been coaching here for 32 years, for 32 years here in the city of FAR. I've been employed for the city of FAR for 17 years. So these kids that we have here, five and six-year-olds, we went to four tournaments and they not lose any games. We win 16-0.
State your name.
Robert Hernandez Jr. And we're with Parks and Recs. And I'm really good. My kids right there, they, they work hard, you know, and the sun, you know, 10 o'clock in the morning, games, you know, 6 o'clock, 8 o'clock games, you know. But they, they came through and, and now we're going to Louisiana and see how we do it over there. The first four games we're going to be playing over there with San Antonio, Laredo, Yango View, Louisiana, and Fort Worth. So those are my first four teams we have to go and destroy. Thank you guys for everything you done for the Parks and Recs and everything. These kids, they enjoy it. Thank you.
I'd like to say something, oh, real quick. Just want to thank you guys for, for the time and the dedication and the effort that you put forward because it's not easy volunteering. It, it takes time and effort. The other thing is the love and the compassion that you have for, for children and parents. I know what it's like to be a parent and to have to do your job, regular house chores, whatever needs to get done, get the kids done, get the kids fed, get those snacks. And oh no, I forgot, and running around, you've got practice here and then, oh, it's at the wrong location. I get it. I completely understand. However, because of the effort that you're putting forth and the effort these coaches are doing also and all the volunteers out there, your children are going to be strong leaders and are going to be able to manage their time for school, for college, for their job, and for their future. So I'm just so, I guess I'm in awe at the, the amount of effort it does. It takes all of us together to raise the children, to provide those opportunities. And thank you so much. Y'all are going to go far. You really are.
I want to say thanks to Parks and Recs for the great job that you're doing. And thank you, Cecilia, for the great direction you give to the city of FAR. Not just during city hours, but after, also after what you do after city hours, which thanks to the parents and the children because without them, we wouldn't have this competition. I do have a five-year-old boy that he doesn't like going to the sun. So I understand how encouraging you guys must be doing because I need to bring my son over so you guys can encourage him because I do want him to play sports, just like Itza said, Commissioner Itza said, it's very important for them and it's also helped them in the future in leadership. So thank you for everything you do.
I want to make a comment as well.
Hello, this is Officer Madonao. And first of all, I want to give you, thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to be here, first of all. And also the recognition for this, you know, first of all, players, right? And young girls that they, they've put their heart and effort, you know, day in and day out, sun, 103 degrees, 105 degrees, and still fighting to get a good spot and a place. And we're just behind a select team. You know, we're not a select team, but we're just behind a select team all these three, four tournaments. But these girls, they fought well. You know, they, they showed a lot of leadership. They show a lot of heart. And, and we, at the end of the last tournament, we placed third place. But you know, I'm, I'm very grateful with this young group of girls that we had here. So thank you guys and for that recognition that you guys are giving us.
And, and thank you both, coaches. We talk about lifting up a city. And that, that's what you're doing. And you're helping us lift up a city. So thank you. So how do you want to give pictures? You want to do one team at a time?
I wanted, I wanted to also thank the coaches and all the volunteers that helped the kids for, for the sports or whatever they played. My son played since he was four years old, baseball, until graduated from high school. But you know, it takes a lot of effort from, from all of you because it's a sacrifice. I know I couldn't do it when I was working, but I know that it is a sacrifice. So thank you very much for doing that. And like Itza says, when your kids grow up, they're going to learn leadership and they're going to be successful kids because when they played in a team, it becomes a team effort. And it's not just one person playing for one position. It's everybody helping each other. So it's really a great thing to be playing sports. So thank you for, for the volunteer that we have in the city of FAR and thank coaches for, for your time and effort. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, I want to thank the coaches for all your work that you do. I mean, it's definitely commendable, all the volunteer work that you put in into this, into the effort of coaching these children. These children are part of the city of FAR. The city of FAR is very proud of its programs with our directors. They will continue to bring forward a great program for, for the next few years and then, and for now on. To the, to the parents, congratulations on this, on what your children have accomplished. And remember one thing, that what these kids learn in sports, it's not just playing the sport. It's socializing, it's the discipline, and many other things that they will gain from being part of a sports, a team sports like, like baseball and softball. So continue being part of the, of the programs. The city of FAR will continue providing them. And again, congratulations to the coaches and to the parents.
I want to see. Okay, now, now picture time. Do we do one, one at a time or?
Yeah, one team, I think, one team at a time.
Congratulations. Hey, young.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job.
Might not be on. All right. So good luck, good luck to our All-Stars. Next, we have Danny Ramirez. Where's Danny? He's going to talk about having a presentation on the ESP 250 program.
Good afternoon. That is Danny Ramirez, EMS chief for the record. So for the last few years, including the last week, FAR EMS, the city of FAR, and our JV Angel Flight has sponsored the SB 250, which is the Spina Bifida 250, which is a bike ride from McAllen to San Antonio to raise awareness and also to raise funding for Spina Bifida. And so Casey Swanson is here. He, he heads up the program, also heads up Susanna Smiles, which is a non-for-profit organization. And so we provide support to make sure that those cyclists, in case anybody gets hurt or anything happens, that we can quickly respond and attend to them. And I'll pass it over to him so he can finish discussing it.
Thank you, Danny. Thank you for having us. Like you said, my name is Casey Swanson. And we, we formed this organization, Susanna Smiles. Our main goal is to support the Spina Bifida community. And this was our 11th year doing the bike ride. City of FAR, sorry. So Susanna Smiles is named after my daughter, Susanna, who was born with Spina Bifida. And so like I said, this is the 11th year we did the ride. The second time the city of FAR has helped out. And in the, in previous years, we had a private EMS company. And I'll tell you, there's no comparison in the, the quality of, of support we had. It was just amazing. This year, we were able to donate $55,000 to the Spina Bifida community with the help of the city of FAR. And we just have a little token for you guys, a cutting board.
All right.
You have to share it. But we also have a, a bag full of t-shirts for you guys and your logos are on the back. So just want to thank you for supporting us and hope we can continue to work together.
Y'all want to hear one quick story? We were really impressed with the guys from, from the team. We had an incident happen and they were on the scene and they took care of the situation immediately. And so we just think really highly of them. The temperatures did reach 120 degrees on the bike ride. And the city of FAR EMTs were able to support a lot of our riders with fluids through IVs. And so the services that you guys provide as a rider, uncomparable, top of, top of the line. So thank you guys as a rider. Thank you.
Yeah, really appreciate you being here, Dad. And nice to meet you, Susanna. So I think the commission would love to take a picture with you.
Yes.
Thank you. Great to meet you.
I've done all 11.
Wow, that's incredible, man. No, no, I don't. None at all. Thank you, Danny. Thanks, Danny.
Thanks, Danny.
All right, next, we have Josep Pena, who's gonna talk about Graybar and what's going on with our fiber optics. And then we're gonna have Cindy come up after him, talk about the GLO partnership and the event they had in Nashville, Tennessee.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and Commission, City Manager. So again, we are working with Graybar, our supplier, for our fiber internet project. And they are producing a marketing campaign, and their first video just got finished. And we'd love to show it to you. So here we are. And this was filmed the day before the city, state of the city, back in January.
FAR is in the state of Texas, the Canary logical. We are literally at the Texas-Mexican border, and we are a very robust community. But everybody's really tight. Everybody knows their neighbors, everybody knows their children in school, or they're in Little League together, football. City of Far owns its own international bridge. It is a commercial bridge, as opposed to one where automobiles or people cross. There's 28 along the Texas-Mexican border. And where the number one post-bridge, we actually feed the east coast and the Midwest with all its fruits and vegetables. The City of Far, unfortunately, we are the number one city in the nation with the least digital infrastructure. We're the worst in the nation. So you have people trying to put networks on buses, having our children run to the library or pirate off a signal from somebody else just to get their homework done. And we see it's such a high priority for us, is that we consider it as part of a normal utility, an absolute necessity. You need water, electricity, the same way you need broadband.
You know, we had to provide a service that is accessible to all families here within our city limits because, again, we are a very low-income area, and we wanted to make everything affordable and reliable to everybody.
So the City of Far has been very aggressive and said, "We're gonna deploy a broadband network. We're gonna own that network so we can determine what we charge for that network." The city's taken it upon themselves because they couldn't get it anywhere else, they're going to do it. And to do that, it took partnerships, and that's the key.
We learned early on that in order to accomplish what we had set out, the city could not do it on its own. We needed to make sure we went to every vendor who had the expertise to bring everything together. And that's been Graybar for us. As our supply chain manager of the project, they have made sure that we have every part that is involved within the supply chain on hand. And we would not have been able to do that without Graybar.
It was kind of a simultaneous set of conversations where I'm right away engaged with the City of Far and their IT team, Brownstone, their consultant, you know, Cobb Benley, their engineering group, and understanding kind of their idea of a spec. And at the end of the day, with customers and suppliers both, it's all about trust. It's building those relationships. It's really at the heart of what we do.
We've accomplished so far a very small percentage of the totality of the project that we did with the first house yesterday, but we still need to do another 300 or 400 neighborhoods. So this next year will be a challenge. But again, with the partners that we have, I'm fully confident that we will execute as mandated to.
We're very excited and worked very hard to get our first home online. You know, it was great to see this project come to fruition, be able to deliver this service to a home that very much needed it. And we want to be able to deliver the exact same service all throughout the city.
So today's an incredibly exciting day, you know, with the leadership of FAR announcing their fiber optic build. What's really great about what the leadership of FAR has done is that they're able to be able to leverage and lean on their partners to be able to get it done right. I think it's gonna be just transformative to this whole community.
Local businesses will now compete on a global scale. There'll be new revenue. The median income will rise in FAR. FAR has a bridge. You look at it in their logo. That is one of the biggest international bridges in the United States. Now, we have a new bridge. We have a technological bridge, and that is fiber optic and broadband.
So again, just wanted to make sure and make you all aware, we've started home installations. We've done 14, actually 15 homes these last couple of weeks. They continue now every day. We're in South FAR. You will see the crews more here in Central FAR. They're 19% completed in Central FAR construction. But again, we're excited that now we've got customers coming on board every single day. So again, we want to make sure all our citizens go to our website, pre-register. That helps us determine neighborhood priorities based on where the majority of the pre registrations are located. And if any issues, they can call 402-2000, and we can relay any messages to our contractors if there's any issues going on in construction.
And, but wait, there's more. There's another video that our awesome media team made about, had some of our customer testimonials. And so we'll queue that up as Cindy shares.
So before the video, we did want to share with you about three weeks ago, we were at a national fiber broadband conference that was put on by Fiber Broadband Association. Through our partnerships, through our supply chain, this opportunity came about in January when Graybar came down, we started working on this marketing campaign with Graybar, and we really started talking about our story. Our story, not only in terms of what we're doing now, but historically, how we got here. You know, the city has been planning for broadband for the past five years. The city was ahead of the curve when broadband was not even discussed five years ago. The commission saw the need and acted in terms of making sure everything was ready for opportunity when it comes to funding and so on, and we're here now. And so because of our story, we were asked, both myself and Jose and the mayor at the time as well, if we could sit on this national panel and tell our story. And so we did that. We did that. There were over, I believe it was over 3,000, 3,000 spectators there from the broadband community. Every major company was at this conference. And to be on that platform and to tell our story, we've never done that before. And it's a testament to what we're doing when we have a room that is filled, every seat is filled, and then you have people standing, wanting to listen to our story. And we knew we made an impact after we showed our first video that we did back in 2017 at the time, when we looked into the crowd and we made an emotional impact, an emotional connection to where you had bigwigs of these companies actually react. And that doesn't happen at a broadband-type conference. So to be able to do that, it just set the tone in terms of where we are and where we need to go in terms of the city, in terms of making sure that we are on a national platform. Because the city is different, but yet we're doing amazing things, and we're light-years ahead of other programs. And so the takeaway for us was really working with our vendors, our supply chain vendors that have these national-type opportunities and tell our story. So the video is gonna give you a good example in terms of what we really saw in Nashville.
It's a digital era, and technology is moving fast, very fast.
What's the internet?
Don't worry about it. It's just gonna change the world.
Yet here at home, the City of Far, like many other communities, is still fighting the digital divide, specifically in rural areas. Access to fast and affordable internet hasn't been an option for many families.
As we explored the entire city for infrastructure needs and talking to our residents, we noticed the fact that some of the children were struggling doing homework. And in discussing with the moms, they told us, well, number one, we don't have a provider here. Nobody provides internet. Number two, when we do have a provider, it's very, it's very bad signals, as they called it. And third, they couldn't afford it. It was a big digital divide.
But FAR had a bigger vision.
And at the City of Far, our leadership decided to, well, it's our problem. We're now in charge of the city to make it better for our residents. So let's go ahead and take a look at what is exactly needed to get people connected. So the best option, long-term, to give quality internet, high-speed internet, reliable internet, and affordable internet, is for the city to take it on as a utility. We want to control the cost, control the quality, give universal access to entire residents of FAR, including the businesses, and that's what we did.
This is why FAR leadership continues learning and investing in everything they need to know to better serve you, our residents. They understand internet is no longer a luxury but a necessity, and recently traveled to Nashville, Tennessee to be part of the Fiber Connect 2022 conference.
It's been a wonderful opportunity, being able to attend this Fiber Connect conference for the first time. You know, we've been working with a lot of companies, a lot of providers throughout our project, and it's great to meet them in person and being able to thank them for all the resources they've provided the City of FAR, you know, all the supply, all the products.
It was important for FAR to share its story during this conference.
There are communities out there that are very similar in demographic as the City of FAR and like the Rio Grande Valley region as well. You know, we have started this project five years ago, and we are light-years ahead of other projects that are just starting. And because of that, we're able to serve as a model, not only in our region and state, but also on a national platform as well.
A project so unique, taking multiple partners to make sure every household in FAR gets access to fast, reliable, and affordable internet. Graybar, Calix, Cornon, to name a few, all crucial partners in the TeamFAR.net broadband project.
What FAR is doing is really exciting, connecting all their citizens, giving them the fiber. They need to really have strong internet connections for not only today but for the future.
What Calix does is we are the access provider that allows the City of FAR to deliver an unmatched broadband experience to their citizens, to their residents. This project is so different than our other municipality projects in that so many are underserved, so many are schoolchildren who don't have sufficient broadband to get a good education. That's what makes this one different than any other municipality project for Calix.
You know, patience is the name of the game in a project like this. The city is, I'm sure, moving as fast as they can to get fiber to every one of the citizens that want it. But I think, you know, as we move through this process, I think we're gonna be partnered with Graybar, like I said, and the city to really kind of bring this home and get it to everybody as quickly as possible.
The overall goal: happy and connected FAR families, schools, and businesses.
It's amazing. It's really been helping me with my schoolwork, especially since I've been attending summer school with my... It's because I have online homework, so it's really been helping me a lot. It's been really fast, and it's really helpful for me and my family.
Estamos muy contentos. Es una muy buena idea del mayor. Esperamos que así como esa haya muchas más, ya que este lo del internet es una medida muy importante en comunicación de la gente con sus familias.
Mi hijo está bien feliz porque pues antes no funcionaba bien, que se cortaba y que este y que el otro, y ahorita está bien feliz.
Estamos bien contentos con mi internet, pues ya andan poniendo todo el equipo para que toda la gente tengan y que estén muy contentos mi gente. Queremos limpiar la área para que también se mire bonito para el internet, para todo lo que están poniendo aquí en FAR.
Now, with access to internet, everyone is on a level playing field.
The feedback that I've been getting is pretty much everybody wants it. And so we expect to have everybody connected under a year's time.
That's a little bit about what we did while we were in Nashville. So we're looking forward in terms of continuing those partnerships with our vendors. And hopefully, come the fall, we will be on some more national platforms to where we really can tell our story. Aside from Jose and I, I also want to thank the media team. We had a one-woman show up there, Yudi, who made sure that she got all the footage we needed so that we can come back and show you, you know, what was really done in Nashville. So thank you again.
And thank you, Cindy and Jose. And then, speaking of the awesome media team, our Fourth of July event was this Saturday, and it was an awesome event. About 4,000 people probably at least showed up. And the media team did another, media team did another great job in putting together another video to recap the event. So here it is. Thank you, media team, and that's it for the city manager's report.
Okay, moving on to the agenda, under consent. All items listed under consent agenda are considered to be routine and uncontroversial by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion.
Move to table, item 6C, from the consent agenda.
61.
Yes. 61, yes. Do we have a second? Any discussions? Take a vote for? Aye. 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 Motion passes.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Any discussions? Take a vote for? Aye. Aye. Motion passes.
Okay, now, under the regular agenda, item 7A, under ordinances and resolutions, consideration and action if any on ordinance appointing, reappointing on alternate municipal judge, and that's adoption on one reading.
Mayor and Protem and Commission, the staff recommends appointing and reappointing of the alternate municipal judge under the same terms and conditions.
Is that Rudy Martinez?
Yes.
Okay. Move for approval to reappoint Judge Rudy Martinez as alternate municipal judge.
Second. Do we have a second? Second. Any discussions? Vote for? Aye. Against? Motion passes.
Item 7B, consideration and action if any on resolution, appointing, reappointing two alternate members to the Board of Adjustment.
And Mayor Protem and Commission, this will be the alternate members, Rogelio Torres and Ramiro Gutierrez.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second? I second, yeah. Any discussion? Vote for? Aye. And a vote against? Motion passes.
Under contracts and agreement, item 8A, consideration and action if any on renewal of memorandum of understanding with the Coastal Bend Regional Advisory Council for the Rio Grande Valley Hospital Preparedness Program.
Vote for approval.
Second. Do we have a second? Any discussions? Vote for? Aye. Aye. Vote against?
Vote against? Motion passes.
Item B, consideration and action, if any, authorizing city manager to execute an investigator-initiated study agreement between Beefly Operations and the City of FAR, FAR EMS.
Move for approval.
Any discussions? Vote for?
Aye.
Motion passes.